First and foremost, let's take your electronics to 111 vibrate. I'll be watching all the tweets on Facebook posts, so that way we won't have to do that. And here it is. You ready? Officer. We're gonna have an announcement from our officers soon.
Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen. First off, let me welcome you to Marvin Ridge High School. My name is Andrew Mullis. I'm a sergeant in the Union County Sheriff's Office. As all of you are aware, this is a public county meeting tonight. With that being said, you guys will have a chance to speak at certain point in time during the meeting. However, this meeting will be held and conducted just as any other public county meeting would be. The... Once you were called on to speak, please keep it in an orderly fashion. If for some reason someone is out of order tonight, Chairman Yerick will ask you to leave this room. If you choose to do so on your own, then you can go out any one of these side exits, and you are welcome to watch the remainder of the presentation in the library or the gym, wherever the overflow area is. If you choose not to leave after Chairman Yerick has asked you to, then he will ask me or one of the other officers from the Sheriff's Office to escort you out, and at that time, you will not be welcome to remain on the premise here at the school, and you will be subject to any charges henceforth based on no federal statute. Everybody good? Have a wonderful meeting, right? Alright, that's the official case. I'm not anticipating any issues at all, so... Alright, I'd like to, before we get started, I know we've got some elected officials in the room. If you would stand up and just tell us who you are and where you're from, we'd appreciate that, so... Who've I got straight back up?
John Gardner, Mayor of Blackstone.
John Gardner over here, I'm sorry.
Dean Curry, Villasus of Chapel.
Thank you.
Ms. Steel.
Thank you, Ms. Steel.
Why'd you done, Mayor of Shaw?
Thank you, Mr. Dunn.
Brad Longeville, Mayor of Wesley Chapel.
Thank you, sir. Like to, we always appreciate it when our folks come in, so who else should we remember missing?
Mr. Ross Murphy, Village of Marvin.
Thank you, sir.
Joe Bellino, Mayor of Marvin.
Thank you, Mr. Bellino.
Lanny Oakshaw, Village of Marvin.
Thank you, Lanny.
Officer Sherrill, Commissioner of Blackstone.
Thank you, sir. Alright, I can't see you real well, so it's all this light there. Thank you all for coming, we appreciate your interest. When overcrowding issues are settled down, I look forward to seeing you at all the other meetings as well. Alright, Cody, if you could come help me a second, that'd be great.
Don't rise for an action.
I put Cody on the spot about thirty minutes ago, and his mom made him run home to change clothes. I thought the Marvin wrestling sweatshirt looked just fine. Okay. Next on our list will be the approval of our agenda.
Mr. Chairman, given that we received a written offer from the Board of County Commissioners this afternoon, and we have not had the opportunity to review it in detail, it would be premature of us to discuss all further options available to us to address overcrowding. Therefore, I would like to make a motion to remove Agenda Item Number 12 and schedule a work session preferably to be held next week.
Second. Thank you, Mr. Stewart. All in favor? So we will move Item Number 12 to a work session next week. Board comments.
I'd like to thank everybody for coming out tonight and welcome you to my home base, or my children's second home, Marvin Ridge, home of the Mavericks and home of the number one ranked soccer team in the U.S. and in the state of North Carolina. I know that there are a lot of people here tonight that were eager to hear what we had to say for discussion for the options for the overcrowding, but if you guys could please respect us and bear with us so that we can get more time and information given to us, as Ms. Todd just had said earlier, for our work session next week. Again, thank you for coming out tonight and welcome to Marvin Ridge. Thank you, Marvin Ridge, for having us.
I'd like to say something. I'd like to thank Mr. Connor and staff for having us here at Marvin Ridge and so graciously hosting us on such late notice. I'd also like to add a couple of other things about Marvin Ridge. Over the past several months, I've watched that social media has been used as a tool to spread the word of redistricting across Union Counties, the state, and who knows where else. Since we began this process, I have seen Dr. Ellis and Union County Public Schools staff accused of misconduct, being liars, cheats, promoting kid agendas, and purposely endangering students. Since the presentation at our last Board of Education meeting, these comments have been directed personally at Dr. Webb also. You have to ask, why? Why would people do that in light of the true intentions of Dr. Ellis and staff? They were merely trying to do their job in the same exemplary manner that they've always done. The Board of Education, after receiving the McKibben report, gave Dr. Ellis and staff the following directives. Number one, define the population bubble and make long-term adjustments. Number two, utilize available seats and provide options. Number three, make sure we optimize efficiency of support systems. That would be core, meal services, safety, offices, and transportation. And number four, we ask the question, how long will it take for the bubble to move through after seating adjustments? I think the memories of some of you in this county are a little short. Dr. Ellis, Dr. Webb, and other senior staff members have worked tirelessly their entire careers to put Union County Public Schools on the education map in North Carolina. I could go on for the rest of this meeting, listing the ways this staff has honored, has been honored with educational achievements throughout the county, the state, and the country. This staff has given countless hours, days, and years of their lives to the unqualified success we bask in today in this county. The majority of the Union County Public Schools staff has been through twenty or thirty budget cycles in their careers, and ten or twelve reassignments since 2004, when I came on board. None have been easy for staff, none have been easy for the board, and certainly none have been easy for the general public. My own children were reassigned from their original schools twice through elementary school and middle school. We never moved. We lived in an older, grown-out neighborhood in Union County. I hope at some point those of you that have clearly misunderstood this process and slandered your elected officials and members of the Union County Public Schools staff will find an equal passion within yourselves to apologize for the same. In closing, I'd like to say that we have seen an awakening in western Union County that is long overdue. My hope is that you will take the time to realize, really educate yourself on all the issues within our county, and that you will come to realize that Union County has lacked strong leadership and clear vision for some time now. Your engagement can change that. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Sorry to take so long.
Thank you, Mr. Dunn.
Mr. Chairman, one quick comment. I would like to say thank you to Assistant Superintendent Sheldon Jeffries and our Transportation Director, Mr. Kingsbury, in recent economic weather. We appreciate the way you approach getting our students on the safe note early, dispense them with getting back in once the roads were passed.
Alright, if there's no others, we're gonna move on to public comments. Thirty minutes has been allotted for public comments. Community members wishing to speak during the public comments should state their name, address, phone number prior to making other comments. The board will not hear in open session complaints about the performance of schools, personnel, personnel issues, confidential student issues. Individuals may address the board for a maximum of three minutes. Any person who is representing a group may address the board for a maximum of five minutes. Should a community member wish to seek information or share items that may not be shared during public comments, our deputy superintendents are available to address your concerns and provide information. Our deputy superintendents will stand as I introduce them, please. Dr. David Clark, Deputy Superintendent of Human Resources. Sir. Dr. Mike Webb, Deputy Superintendent of Constructional Technology and Operations. Alright. Folks, we will ask Mr. John Karenato and his daughter Sarah to come, and we've got the... We'll give you a heads up when it's time to wrap up for you, three minutes, okay? Thank you.
Good evening, my name is John Torando, 602, Anderson Court, Blackstone. My contact number is 618-641-7640. My daughter wishes to address the board.
Good evening, my name is Sarah Torando, and I'm in eighth grade. On behalf of my family and a growing number of new residents, I urge the board to reject using enrollment caps as a permanent solution to overcrowding in our schools. They don't fix anything. At the moment, only a few schools are affected, but according to the enrollment forecast provided on the UCPS website, by 2016, one-third of all the middle schools and the high schools will be at 120% or more of poor capacity and are to be very close. It will be that much harder to solve the issue by then. Here's another, the impact on students like myself who are affected. At the moment, I have over an hour's bus ride each way, passing not one, not two, but three much closer local schools. This effectively ruins any chance I have of joining extracurricular activities and results in a lack of sleep and a disrupted family and social life. I can put up with it for the remainder of this year, but it isn't just me. My brother faces three full school years of the same, and as I mentioned, by the time he's in high school, he might be frozen after that as well. That's seven years. How can you help participate fully in school life when he's an hour and a half away, making fun things like school dogs and a hassle and normal life struggle? These children face mute, most adults aren't put up with. This is their education, my education, but it's in your hands, and our futures are hurt by this. You must also consider the impact on the wider community. I find it hard to believe people can justify spending over $2 million on extra bus costs when funds aren't even available to repair the roots on some of our schools. And what about housing, my friend? It has already suffered in the current situation, and if we do nothing, imagine how badly it will be next year or 2016. Residents are already struggling to sell their homes as potential new families discover that their kids can't even attend their local schools. As many people have, it may not seem relevant right now, but it quickly becomes a real concern when jobs move or personal circumstances change. The argument for maintaining the cap relies on the assumption that it's just a population bug and it will work itself out. It's not actually that easy, because if it was, the county wouldn't be in a situation to deal with. This enrollment cap policy clearly discriminates between neighbors attending or letting them move, which sacrifices the livelihood of one group of students and adversely impacts the wider community in favor of another group. While I think the Board of Education has some difficult decisions to make, its core values are incompatible with allowing the current enrollment cap to remain in place as a solution to overcrowding in our schools.
So we got Lisa Hall and Carrie Strohler. Judy Holler, if you want to come down and be close, we'll have you up next.
Hi there, my name is Lisa Hall. I live at 5311 Great Rock Court in Blackstone, and my contact number is 747263537. As I'm here to represent the Berkshire neighborhood, which is located just off Newtown Road in the Wesley Chapel area. I currently have a third grades unit at Newtown Elementary School and a sixth grades unit at Cupfordsen Middle. I'm also a member of the Newtown Elementary Site Base Management Team, a position I've held since 2011. I'd like to begin tonight by saying that I was thrilled when I woke up this morning and discovered that the Union County Commissioners voted to give UCPS $3 million for the purchase of additional trailers for our schools at last night's meeting. The monetary allocation was made in order to prevent the need for redistricting for our children. Nothing could have made any parent in this community happier. The county commissioners' decision only helps submit the argument that our neighborhood was made against redistricting, and the use of additional trailers at this time to manage overcrowding in current schools was actually the number one recommendation from our neighborhood committee. We're here to urge the Board of Education to please slow down the entire redistricting process and take time to explore other options to reduce overcrowding in a handful of schools that are currently near capping range. We are opposed to the current redistricting plan overall as it specifically affects our neighborhood. However, in preparing for the worst-case scenario, and that all of you can't seem to see that redistricting is not the best choice for our children, I'd like to present a few reasons why our particular neighborhood, Berkshire, should be pulled back into the Cupfordsen Cluster. We're currently the only neighborhood on the western side of Millie Howey Road that was pulled away from the Cupfordsen Cluster. The neighborhood right beside us, with houses literally in our backyards, is only one-tenth of a mile away and remain in the Cupfordsen Cluster. It makes no sense that the current Cupfordsen Cluster dividing line is through our backyard and is, we're literally divided by a fence, not a North Carolina State Road. Because Berkshire is at the edge of the cluster dividing line, the time our students spend on buses to Western Union and Parkwood Midland High would be the greatest for our particular neighborhood. Currently Newtown is one mile away from us, and Cupfordsen Midland High is less than three miles away. Our elementary school students are only on the bus for fifteen minutes each way each day, and the same time for our Midland High School kids. The proposed changes would triple the distance that our children travel within school and impact the amount of time for sleep, homework, extracurricular activities, and cut short critical family time spent during school day meetings. Our neighborhood has been redistricted three times in the short span of seven years. However, unlike many large neighborhoods, Berkshire has just sixty-eight homes total and was filled out completely in 2006 with no plans or available expansion or phases. We have had no significant impact on overcrowding in the schools to which we've been assigned here in our existence, and only have a current total of thirty-five combined units attending elementary, middle, and high school. We're also concerned with a major safety issue with one of the Parkwood Cluster facilities, Western Union Elementary School. Based on the January 2009 Facilities Report, an assessment was made that said, quote, "This school is very old and may require more work inside and out to update the school versus removing the whole school and building a new facility at rear and side." It concludes with the words, "Demolish existing facility." The listed conditions that were rated unsatisfactory in the facility are too numerous to list tonight. They're included in a report to be given to all of you. Western Union Elementary is an accident waiting to happen. How can you justify keeping this facility open, much less with more kids entering? This is another example of why this redistricting plan is to be reconsidered, and time needs to be spent to come up with true long-term solutions for schools in this area. Please take time to consider other options such as continuing with capping until we see if the proposed students who are supposed to join the Union County population actually come to fruition in the next few years. It's simply not fair to punish those of us who've been paying Union County taxes for years to hold seats for students that may or may not arrive. Our neighborhood strongly supports bringing trailers in as a temporary solution. We have all had students attend classes in trailers, and we have absolutely no concern about their safety in local units. We'd also be in favor of paying higher taxes in the form of a bond referendum to help additions to current schools that face overcrowding issues, and to help rank the facilities of older schools like Western Union to up to a higher standard. Redistricting is just a band-aid solution that will alleviate overcrowding issues temporarily, but will need to be addressed again in five or years. Our children are not homes in a game, they are our most precious commodity. Please treat them that way. Thanks so much for your time, and hope you'll consider the information we have provided when folks be sure.
We can tell that we cannot use the power of a presentation attached to it.
Sean O'Shea, you are on deck.
My name is Judy Holler. I live in 1000 Roy Vista Lane. I'm representing Blackstone community. I have a position in Monroe who have been fifteen years. I have to admit that I was unaware of the educational and structural discrepancies in Union County schools. I, for that, am ashamed of myself. There are a lot of us here who found out the same things the same way and have mentioned that shame to me. So tonight, the four of us are representing thousands at all, thousands of Union County residents, and we're here to let you know that we are here to help you. Alright? We are here to help you assist forty-two thousand students of fifty-eight months, because either some parents' voices are falling on deaf ears, or because they've lost their voices from yelling so long and had nothing done in their request. Well, we haven't lost ours, and we're just getting warmed up. If you look at the slide, I'm on the first one. First, we need a few things. We need time. Time to make temporary fixes to establish partnerships, and they are coming, and nobody knows what impact they're going to have. Some of them may be coming sooner than we expected, because they're trying to get their LEAs changed, and we're helping. We need to repair and we need to rebuild the irreparable. The other thing we need, we need trust, we need transparency. It is so difficult for us to get information that you guys have. It's public knowledge. We need trust and transparency. We need to be able to come to you informed. Slide two. So to get our plan, we trust in you that redistricting is about overcrowding, not money, not test scores, not federal grants, not feathers for anyone's cap, overcrowding. Next slide. We trust that the numbers you gave us are accurate, and that we presently have a seventy-one child issue. We trust that if the growth rate does double in one year, that that will go to two-hundred-and-eight-four. That is not a crisis, that is an issue. I know crisis, I see it every day, I know what it is. We can fix this, and we have time. Few slips. Slide five. So we've used your stated methodology to affect as few children as possible with the least transportation impact. When we came up with a solid plan, there are brilliant people sitting here. When we came up with a solid, short-term plan and a solid, permanent fix to our problem, something we believe our proposal will fall short. Slide six. We looked at your data and arrived at an increase of two-hundred-and-seventy-five thousand miles annually based on one bus per school per neighborhood. Seven-hundred-and-forty-thousand-dollar increase in transportation costs falls on North Carolina's taxpayer, and we understand that, that that has to be paid for by someone. Transportation brings me to say, since 1865, one child has died in a tornado in school, and that was in 1931, and he wasn't in a trailer. I spoke with the experts who advised the high-strengthening and all the enforcement officers in Union County. I know a lot of them. They tell me that there may actually be a safety improvement in an active shooter situation with a trailer, and I'll be happy to discuss that when I have further time. If we look at the fact that a child is eighty-five times more likely to die in a school bus accident in North Carolina than in a tornado, increasing their travel by two-hundred-and-seventy-five-thousand-three-hundred-and-sixty-four miles using your data in one year is a bigger risk than we need to tackle. Let me introduce the people that are following me. They're intelligent, they have a plan. Please open your minds, because I have to, because you may actually hear the "aha" moments you're looking for.
Union Board members, my name is Sean O'Shea, I represent Wesley Chase Developments in Wesley Chapel, 10704, 2378377. I just want to reiterate what Jody said. Can everybody hear me?
Yeah.
Just want me to read what Jody said. We are absolutely here to provide assistance, and as Jody said, a lot of us were unaware. I wouldn't have known any, I've been here two years, and I wouldn't have known any board member here that I would have known by walking through. And I talked to them. As Jody says, we want to move forward, we want to provide assistance. I'd like to start off, I know you, I believe you all have the slide decks, and there's a portion of people who do have slides posted. I want to start with the definition of a word. The word is chess. A game for two players, each of whom moves sixteen pieces according to fixed rules across a checkerboard, and tries to checkmate the opponent's king. As I see it, there are two players within this latest issue, and they are the BOE and the VOC Sig. I get it, I work in corporate America, I understand how strategies work, how you implement tactics in order to get the set goal. What I am a bit upset about is who we're dragging into this chess match, and that's our kids. I'm fine when we drag an adult into this, drag me in, I would help, I would roll them asleep, and I would take care of them. I'm not making light of the issue, that there is an issue within the school system with the current focus on the overcrowding, but I would ask, please leave the kids out of this for the moment. An offer was made last night by the VOC Sig, but your parent group does not accept it to me. Let's stop the chess game, let's sit down, all stakeholders, vote in the public, and let's move and develop a long-term solution to our issues. I'm on slide seven of the slide that was handed out, and what this is, the purpose is to provide a summary of some of the high-level numbers. As Jody had mentioned, we're taking a look at, in the intro, an overcrowding issue with about two-hundred-and-eighty-four students in the years 2014 to 2015. Total number of students over the watch level is seven-hundred-and-eighty-five. This has an impact of five-thousand-eight-hundred-and-forty-nine students. The number of schools, however, being affected far outweigh the number of schools where the impact lies. Slide and create. Unexplained capacity increase. Going through the numbers that have been on the BOE website, I just have questions, and maybe they haven't been answered elsewhere, but if we take East Union, before reassignment, the watch level was one-thousand-one-hundred. After reassignment, the watch level was gone up to one-thousand-one-hundred-and-fifty. I'm not sure, was that for space bound, fifty children? There are a number of schools that fall into that category, as high as a ten-percent increase in score one, though, going from eleven-hundred to twelve-hundred students. Once again, two questions. Moving over to slide number nine. We need to ask, really, once again, redistricting has happened, I believe, as Tom mentioned, four to seven times the fastest. more to seven times than ten to twelve times. This seems to be the go-to solution every time. We can't settle for that anymore. We have to sit down. What is, what is the root cause? How do you define that? How do you put some problem-solving technique around that and develop a long-term solution? Your estimates show that the bubble moves northeast and schools there have been moving to a capital within two years. All you're doing is moving the bubble northeast. What are you going to do then? Reassign us again? This can't keep going. Slide number 10. And once again, apologies to the graph here showing the details on that bubble based on the information you put out on your own website. Once again, how do we prevent just the shift? This is up and, we appreciate the county commissioners who offered someone a trailer. Is it a short-term solution, is it a long-term solution? We don't know. I absolutely agree, you need to take that to a workshop, discuss what are the solutions. But don't come back to something that's just moving above from one place to another. Conclusions on slide number 11. It is my understanding that the findings of McKibben Report were never intended to be implemented all at once. Even with the possible addition of MCRs, we are masking the issue, it's only a temporary solution. Redistricting has been implemented numerous times in the past few years, it hasn't fixed the issue. Less than 1% of the students are in schools that are over capacity. Now the plan is to move over 14% of the overall population. Why, everyone? Redistricting is leaving empty seats in the newer schools while moving children to older schools that need repair and to watch over capacity levels. Slide 12. Recommendation. Take the time. Is this like the graphics?
Sean, wrap up quickly.
All right. Take the time to do it right. Take the VOC Sig up on their altar, meet with them. Solve the root cause of overcrowding. Not apply macro fixes or a micro issue. Repair our schools. Design, implement, and execute plans that get all the problems resolved.
Pardon my bad. Hard here, Phil.
All right. Good evening, Dr. Ellison, board members. My name is Pamela Collins, 911 and I'm a second-class children's teacher on the San Diego County Street. But tonight I'm addressing you on behalf of the Union County Association of Educators from the National Association of Local Treasuries. I reside at 3806 Chatham Drive in Monroe. My phone number is (704) 282-0181. I come tonight asking your support of the 25% teacher contract resolution that first introduced you during December 2013 Northern HSD. We accept your application resolution in its original form or use it as a template. A resolution signed by this board would publicly denounce the legislation requiring our school system to be inviting 25% of our teachers to sign away their due process rights in exchange for a four-year contract and unfunded promise of greater money. Regardless of your decision, we want to be upfront and letting you know that we are actively encouraging our Union County Public Schools colleagues to decline to sign. If the 25% contract is offered, because these contracts are divisive and they go against Union County Public Schools' core values, this legislation also perpetuates the absurd idea that North Carolina's benchmark for excellence stands at having one in four competent teachers. This is not the time to lower our standards. The Union County Association of Educators believes, as we know and you do, that every child deserves an excellent teacher. Thank you.
I see Lance Simpson, you're on deck.
I will pick up where Sean was left off. My name is Kim Warvestin, 916-21 Circle Trace in Monroe, (704) 996-3070. And I'm speaking on behalf of the Potter Trace Community. We recognize that the redistricting proposal is intended to address the immediate issue of overcrowding in three of our 53 schools and potential future overcrowding based on the enrollment forecast from the given report. Mr. Collins, the statistics are the reason why we question your motive. It's quite clear that this is not an issue that should uproot 5,800 students this fall to solve. In fact, due to the enormous impact imposed on Union County residents as a result of this plan, we believe that there has to be an underlying motive. To take such unpopular, drastic, and statistically unnecessary measures to accommodate such a small number of students, especially when that, when the numbers show that by your plan, this would all have to be redone again in just a few years. Looking at slide 14. The perception held by many is that the goal of this plan has more to do with raising test scores and satisfying the RACR top requirements. We are asking you to prove us wrong through your actions by accepting the $3 million lifeline that has been offered to you to avoid redistricting for us. We all agree this is a temporary solution and we still need to attack the root cause of the overcrowding issue, but don't let that be an excuse as to why this offer cannot be accepted. As Dr. Ellison said, we can do it. Slide 15. The discrepancy of test scores between the low-performing and high-performing schools is astounding. We understand that mixing higher performing with lower performing students will provide the needed improvement scores which tie back to funding, but are you willing to do this at the expense of our bids? By hiding the true scores, it is a disservice to those that really need our help. That would be when educators do call cheating. And still, the same kids that don't do well in school will continue to not do well in school. They need to be our focus. This is our perception and we are telling you that if it is the case, then you're negligently going about making the proper improvements needed at the cost of our students and without their best interests in mind. If, in fact, however, overcrowding is truly the issue at hand, then redistricting is not a solution, nor has it proven to be in the past years to what you have outlined as a bubble situation. More than ever, the lack of communication between the board, the Board of County Commissioners, and the municipalities has come to light. It is time that each of these entities takes the proper steps to engage in purposeful, effective leadership that will result in solving, not masking, the root cause of the overcrowding issue exacerbated by increasing residential density, the rate of development, lack of proper funding, and other factors outside the purview of this board. The issue of redistricting has brought Union County together in an unprecedented way. We are more united than ever. You have a captive audience before you. Utilize the expertise and volunteerism of the people you serve and let us work with you through an advisory council partnership to find great solutions to managing the growth. Here is how we urge you to proceed over the next 12 months. We urge you to immediately impose, as we faced, cluster tax, or if there are legal issues around this, then simply commit to keeping our kids in their schools for the 2014-15 year with tax. There is no urgency to impose redistricting this year. For the three schools that are overcrowded, either send the new students to the closest appropriate school where space is available or utilize our unused MCRs. We do not need 49 MCRs on day one. In fact, you should not need more than 12 for the entire year based on your forecast. Precedent has been set, we can do it. Explore academic restructuring and move grades to best utilize our facilities and to accommodate the bubble. For example, the K3 and K6 models are used around the country and are feasible. Research shows that moving 6th grade to the elementary schools results in higher test scores. This is an option for overcrowded clusters. Our volunteer time is free. And you've alluded to, when speaking of the current classes not offered at the various high schools, that you bring those classes to the students, the same can be done with this alternative. Thank you for your time and please understand that redistricting is not a solution.
Good evening. My name is Lance Simpson and my address is 1835 Human Drive, installing. My contact number is (704) 821-5447. I represent the Antioch Wedding to Redistricting Board. As a community, we recognize that long-term solutions are needed. However, redistricting every three to five years is not the answer. There are options available, including the K through 6 that was just presented to you. We have the use of mobile classrooms through the bubbles, charter schools, school choice, and magnet schools, upgrading existing schools and new schools in addition. If you look at the mobile classrooms, which is a hot topic lately, when we look at your numbers, 12 mobile classrooms needed for 2014-15, nine the following year, and 13 the year after that. And according to Dr. Webb's presentation, the use of mobile classrooms will alleviate the need for tax and redistricting. A slight warning. If you look at charter schools, they're coming to Union County. There are currently several applications in the state of North Carolina, including Valley Press Charter Academy, Union Repertory Charter School, Frontier Academy, Matthews Academy, and Matthews-Rimble Charter Academy. Projected enrollments for the 2015-2016 years for grades K through 6 and 8 is 2,031 students. The 2019-2020 years, which will include grades 7 through 12, has a projected enrollment of 2,947 students. Those charter schools will make a positive impact on overcrowding in Union County. Slide 22. We also need to look at other options for the future, including school choice, magnet schools, and STEM programs. These programs need to be established in schools with available seating and in centralized locations. I know there's been some concerns, addressed by the board and some of the other topics regarding these schools and these options. According to the Department of Education, No Child Left Behind Public School Choice Guide, when all students are provided high-quality educational options and when parents receive enough information to make intelligent choices among those options, public school choice can increase both equity and quality in education. And in regards to magnet schools in particular, a study by Casey Pop, who's Associate Professor of Educational Policy and Director of the Center for Educational Policy Analysis at the Mead School for Educational Foundations, quotes the likelihood that they would interact with persons of other races was much higher. That's the intent of magnet schools, to bring persons from different backgrounds to create a more vibrant community. Slide 23. We also have to recognize that there are aging schools in our communities. Long-range plans need to be developed to renovate or rebuild those schools. Parkway Piedmont-Sundale High School was built in the 1960s. The middle school was built in 1975. Western Union Elementary and East Elementary were both built in the 1950s. For your 2009 facilities study, the general conclusion for both of those units were to demolish the existing facilities. Yet under your proposed redistricting plan, those schools would have additional students. Ladies and gentlemen, we do not need to send new students to those schools, we need to fix those schools for the students who are there. We need to size the schools to match growth and provide the best educational environment we can. As parents and leaders of the community, it is our responsibility to make sure that we provide every educational opportunity we can for the students within the county. And we need to provide new schools in addition to those schools that are in high-growth areas. Let's face it, Charlotte is probably, Union County will grow along with it. And slide 24. We also ask that you partner with the community and improve communication. Any enterprise communication tends to eat. We would ask that you place someone from Union County parents on the facilities committee or separate, that we are an uncapped source of knowledge and experience and we're free. Establish liaisons within each cluster to work with the Board of Education. And please, for the sake of all students, please take this opportunity to repair the relationship between the two boards. We ask that we work together with parents and the Board of County Commissioners to develop sustainable, long-term solutions for Union County Public Schools. And in closing, I would just like to thank the Board of Education for the opportunity to speak tonight, the county commissioners for funding the mobile classrooms, which provides us the time that we need without a tax increase for those mobile classrooms, and to all of the committee and community members who have put in countless hours for piling this information. Your efforts and support are greatly appreciated. Thank you.